I could call the Monday, April 25th, 2011, meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission to order. We have a relatively simple agenda tonight. And as we've been doing for the last three or four months, basically, everything we'll talk about tonight is about the town plan. And we're going to take a little different tack tonight in that down the line there is discussion of zoning changes for land use chapter of town plan. We talked about this and decided that we needed to talk a little bit about definitions, in zoning, and some of our hopes and fears for the zoning for town. And then we'll get a pretty comprehensive status report on where the town plan is right now. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of April 11th, 2011.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Announcements. I sort of culled a bunch of things from my emails. And I'll just give you a quick run-through. I promised that I would always tell everybody what Act 250 hearing and whatevers that I get. So one of them was the notice of Sir Sosmo is they're doing a kiln drive project on Vernon Street. I don't think there's a hearing on that. I think it's just an announcement or a notice, I mean. And then there was an Act 250 project review notice for replacing three Verizon antennas, cell towers, antennas up on South Street. And then an Act 250 ruling on the signalization at BMH. They did, they ruled that they didn't have to, no signalization was necessary at this time to be revisited in five years, I believe.
So that means it's okay? Is that what that means?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they changed the lanes on Canal Street.
Right.
And so I think it's because they had a, they have a slip lane now, and it just, or a left turn lane. And so I think traffic doesn't get backed up like, or they think it's not going to get backed up like they thought it was going to, so.
And there are other technical issues or design issues associated with winter driving conditions if they were to install lights at that intersection further downhill. So there's this debate as to whether it would, it might solve some problems and cause others. Basically, 18 wheels failing to get traction up the hill if they had to stop downhill for the lights.
Like at Maple and Pine, that intersection?
Yeah, that's, which is a pretty bad intersection.
Yeah.
So.
You can't see there.
Right. So I think.
But for now, for the next five years, it's the way it is?
Yeah.
So.
That's good.
Hold on to your hats.
Yeah, really.
Five years.
Right.
Only two other things I have is there's a broadband conference on the 21st of May at Vermont Technical College. Anybody needs any information on that, let me know. I'll forward it to you.
What's the date again?
21st of May.
21st of May. And there's a lawn mower exchange at the Wyndham Solid Waste on the 30th of April. It's Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, where you can exchange a gas mower for an electric mower. You don't even have to have a gas motor to, mower to exchange. You can buy an electric mower for cheap.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cool.
But your gas mower doesn't get you a electric mower for free either?
It doesn't.
Right. So exchange is kind of a stretch concept here.
You exchange money for an electric mower.
Plus you have to hand in the old mower.
Well, you don't have to have an old mower.
Right. So you just have to buy, you can buy a new one.
You get a good deal. You get a good deal on an electric mower. And the idea is to take the gas ones off the, off the landscape, so.
And this is on April 30th?
Mm-hmm.
At the dump?
Yeah.
From 1:00 to 1:00?
9:00 to 1:00.
Careful, they could get you for calling at the dump.
I mean.
In New Jersey.
It's a mower dump.
Really?
Yeah, right. The Woldorf, it's called the dump.
The solid waste. I'd call it the dump too.
Right.
So those are all the announcements I have. Anybody got any announcements?
Just a reminder that the Energy Working Group is meeting next Monday at 3:00 in Kana Kozmin.
Okay. Wait a minute. I was told today that it's next week, Monday at 3:00?
Mm-hmm.
What's, Julia, she's going, works in your office?
Yes.
It's not Julia's fault.
Julia told me it was Wednesday.
It wouldn't be Julia's fault.
Oh, is it?
I thought it was Wednesday.
Maybe it is.
I'm not assigning blame per se. I am just debating what I was told and by whom, so we could know.
I thought it was Wednesday, not Monday.
She told me, she told me the 4th.
I have it as Monday.
Oh.
I must be wrong.
Yeah, I had it as Monday.
I told Julia, so.
At 3:00 30. Was it in our minutes?
No.
No.
Talk about it.
Well, I think at the last Energy Committee meeting, we were debating it.
Yes.
We were figuring it out.
Right.
So have we come, can we come up with a date?
I have it as Monday.
Yeah, let's, and we'll send out a confirmation of the date announcement tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And we'll trust Julia.
Just before I came.
Because that's probably the best thing to do.
I want to be sure.
Yeah.
So you're going to send out tomorrow, you're going to send us out?
Yeah.
What it is?
Yeah. But I think, you're thinking it's.
I thought it got changed to Wednesday because I thought Paul was out of town until like.
Yeah.
He's back, oh.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought he was back the middle of this week.
I will check.
Yeah, we'll check and we'll let you know, okay? Thanks, Jim. Sorry about that.
He wants to bring up.
So Monday is the 2nd.
Yeah.
Actually, I have it there as well.
But if two of you have it on Monday. But you two have PDAs and you both pulled out Monday.
Yeah.
I think we said Monday at the last meeting, but then it was probably going to be reconfirmed. So we'll see what happens.
Do you have a preference?
I would prefer the Wednesday myself, because I guess.
I have it as Monday.
Do you have a preference?
I don't know, I haven't had my book with me.
I have it as Monday.
I have it for Monday.
All right.
I have it as, I have it as Monday.
Sarah's here on Monday, I think that's.
I have it as Monday at 5:30.
I have it as Monday from 3:00 to 4:30.
Yeah, that's what I have to.
Okay. Let's call the whole thing off.
Really, aren't we a good group? I think it's Mondays because Sarah.
Were any members of the public who?
We don't know the day.
Is this how it goes? Yes. This is how we roll.
This is your competent planning commission here in action.
So Liz, why don't you get your BlackBerry to talk to mine and I was like, I don't know. It's like, we should just leave all our phones in a stack and let them sort it out.
Yes.
That's a great idea.
We'll confirm it tomorrow.
Okay. Questionable at this moment.
All right.
Have we posted the position opening for Dana yet?
That, we have talked to the powers that be, and the vacancies on town boards and communities will be done in a.
Oh, clump.
Clump for June.
Oh, that's right, because their seats are off.
There are seats up there anyway, so approximately. It's so close to June that they're just going to deal with it in one fell swoop.
Okay, great.
So we're a smaller board until then?
Yeah. We still need four for reform.
Yeah.
Hey, that's a good question. Yes.
Because it's seven, yeah, right, I know.
Any other announcements?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay. All righty. Any other business? No other business. Now, there's a member of the public here, and this is the time for public comment. Would you like to comment on anything?
No.
No? Okay.
I should be invited to come.
If you, if you do want to participate in discussion, we're, we will be talking about the town plan in a couple of sections. And you're welcome to, if you want, you can come up and sit up there. And if there is anything that you want to say, just come to the mic if you want to sit back there and say who you are, please, and where you live, and thanks for coming. Okay. So the next item is discussion of zoning changes for land use chapter of town plan. And this is going to be some discussion of definitions. It's really, in part, meant to be, well, as this sheet says, background information on zoning techniques. The idea is that when we write the land use chapter, we'll be talking about any zoning changes that we see, at least in general terms, that we would see for the future, that ought to be in the town plan, ought to be called out in the town plan and have more force of language, I guess. And, and so even though as a, as a board, we have written a couple of ordinances in the last few years, we haven't done that many, and they haven't covered a lot of the things that zoning does cover. And so in some ways, as a board, we're novices at this, you might say. And so this is sort of a little primer on things that some of us may know and some of us may not. But at least we'll all be on the same couple of pages, right? So Sue, are you going to lead this, or Rod, are you?
We're going, we're going to split it.
Groovy.
You want to start off?
Sure. So the first thing I want to do, I'm just sort of remembering all my early efforts at planning commission and DIB-type training. Just because there are enough of you who are pretty new, I'll start here, and then if you already know it, you can just let me know that I'm moving too slowly, but I wanted to fill in some background here. Brattleboro's zoning and subdivision regulations are often referred to by people who try to use them regularly as really badly outdated and contradictory and clumsy and a whole bunch of other things that are none too complimentary. And I think that most of those criticisms are pretty apt, but I think that they, and this isn't, you know, it's not meant to sound defensive, but I think that they compare relatively, I mean, I don't think they're the worst I've ever seen. They're certainly not the oldest in Vermont, and so on and so forth. So what I'd say is, is that plenty of communities struggle with what is the equivalent to the Bible covering land use development in terms of its age, or its clunkiness, or its contradictory nature, you know, that one paragraph and one section of it will inevitably contradict a paragraph in another section. It is partly the nature of rulemaking and partly the nature of doing things repeatedly, you know, making minor amendments repeatedly over time. There are just some real basic issues with what this kind of a document is. And so you'll often hear criticism that may actually be apt, but it compares, I would say, moderately well to its peers, which is not to say that it's perfect or that it couldn't be better. So I want to put that out there. The next one is Vermont is actually not a home rule state. And in the rest of New England, actually, you do have home rule states. So there are some real basic legal differences between the way you would construct a zoning ordinance or land use regulations in Vermont, say, compared to Massachusetts, because Massachusetts is a home rule state. Can you remember the name of the judge from Ohio that gives?
Dylan.
Dylan, that's right. And you, and I'll make another reference to that later on, which won't be nice. But so we are Dylan's law state, where like Ohio, for instance, where municipalities exist at the pleasure of the state. So it's rather than bottom up, it's effectively top down. This is important because the framing document for zoning and subdivision regulations in this state is state statute. And here we're talking about Chapter 117. The other part of the problem that we have here is that, just like our own zoning and subdivision regulations, Chapter 117 has been endlessly amended and is endlessly amended over time. So the idea that you're always going to be totally in sync with the state statute is a challenge. And again, finding all the places in your document that need to be amended as a consequence of a small amendment in that overarching state statute can be, can be elusive. So I just wanted to set up that framework.
And that's the red book, right?
That, it's now the same color as kids' medicine, kind of a weird gray color.
Oh, okay. But it's that book.
The one that induces noise, yeah, yeah.
Is this one of the things that we want to encourage the state?
To change the color, change the color of the book.
Well, no, no, the color, I mean.
That would be, that would be hard to do, but important and good. Yes, go on.
Well, Sarah Edwards has asked us in the past to.
To change the.
To change it to a home rule state?
Yeah. To pursue things to them that we want to see them work on. I mean, is this, is that a cumbersome thing to change us to a home rule state?
Yeah. I mean, it's like, that's at the bottom of the Constitution, it's like, that's not going to change.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you.
Yeah. It's not, it's not anything that the people of Vermont would, you know, answer a referendum at an election and go, yeah, we'd really like to be home rule. And someone goes, yep, and just like flicks a switch. It's like, you're starting from.
A little complicated.
You're going to start with a brand-new Constitution.
So Rod?
It's, it's.
It's not something we would love.
No, it's integral to the system, is what I'm saying.
Does it happen that, how big of a wholesale change do towns make in their zoning ordinances? I mean, is it really rare that, you know, a high percentage of the, of the ordinances would get worked on? Like, like for instance, we're looking ahead five years and saying, well, I think, you know, the outcome of this is that we're going to recommend, or we're going to, we're going to call for an action of some amount of amendment of Brattleboro zoning ordinance. Right?
Yeah, I think what we're aiming for is that we're going to write a new zoning ordinance and a new set of subdivision regulations.
In their entirety.
In their entirety. And I think that what we've reached is the point where we feel that there are some dated, dated concepts that are underpin the existing document, and we feel like there's enough contradictions and, and conflicts that we've reached the point where it would be easier and more effective to start over than to try a renovation job. And so.
Yeah, I mean, to that I would say, I mean, I don't think that, well, it might be formatted differently and organized differently. I don't think that everything is thrown out.
Every word.
Though, either.
No. Not every word is going to change.
Most of it will be retained, but it'll be looked at in, in the whole document.
Yeah. And we, Sue and I, have benefited enormously from the work of a consulting firm of planners that worked around Vermont for many years, that now no longer exists, that drafted new zoning and subdivision regulations for a variety of communities. There's plenty of, I guess what I'm trying to say is, there's plenty of templates and examples of how to organize and structure a zoning ordinance that we, and subdivision regulations that we as professionals might think makes more sense and is easier to, to work with. And I think what I'd like to do is sort of move into the substantive kinds of changes as a way of illustrating what we would envision at least being up for discussion. So, but I think that members of the DIB, members of previous planning commissions, previous planning directors and staff have pretty much reached the point where we feel like it's time for a re, a major rewrite, which is not to say that every word would be totally eliminated, but, but that the structure, the format, and the underlying principles would be different, which is pretty much.
Covers it.
Pretty much major. Yeah. So it's a new product. It is essentially what we're looking at, rather than modifying the existing product.
Okay.
All right. So if you look at the packet that we sent out, one of the things that we've benefited from is that there was a very comprehensive, very large, best read online simply because of its sheer size, document from New Hampshire called Innovative Land Use Planning Techniques Handbook, which we're drawing some of these definitions from. And those in particular are things that are absent right now from ours, and that would be energy efficient development, conservation subdivision, steep slope and ridgeline protection. There's other useful information from so-called VPIC, Vermont Planning Information Center. And there's also, from that publication, we mentioned two in particular, Unified Development Bylaws, which would simply mean that you merge zoning and subdivision regulations as one document, and then Design Guidelines/Standards, which is a big jump between one and the other. If you look, so if you hold those, so if you read those things in preparation for tonight, that's good. So then if you turn to the chart that we've handed out this evening, did you get one?
Yes.
All right. There's three columns. They don't necessarily relate to each other in any kind of obvious way. The first column on the far left is things that we in general would regard as small in nature, not necessarily a big challenge to incorporate into the existing document, things that we're aware of, that, you know, don't necessarily require a lot of discussion tonight, or, or challenge us in terms of working on the existing document. In other words, each one of those bullet items could be undertaken without necessarily drafting completely new regulations. Okay? The middle column.
Now, would it be fair to say that those things on the left have been in the same order magnitude or whatever as what we've been doing for years?
Yes, in fact, they're, yeah, exactly. So, so they are, for the most part, to help people who are relatively new to the commission, we have an annual get-together between the Development Review Board, which is the body that actually issues the permits, and us, the body that amends the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations, and identify small, minor things that we could amend or repair that have come to their attention mostly, or it's something that we've been thinking about. And this list is pretty consistent with the sorts of things that we've taken on a semi-annual basis over the last couple of years. So if people want to know what we mean by any one of those bullet items, I'm happy for either Sue or I to talk about them and clarify what we mean by them. But I'd like to sort of direct most of our attention to the next two columns, which is the things that we would regard as constituting a major policy change, which is the kind of thing that you would think about when you were going to draft new regulations. And then the last column, the furthest to the right, is the kind of, pardon me, the regulatory techniques that you might use to achieve those major policy changes. So, any, any questions so far?
Is form-based code the thing that Todd brought a, he brought a disc that we could borrow and, and look at for that? Was that, that's that, okay.
Yep.
We'll talk, yeah.
We can talk about form-based code once we get along, but I just.
Yeah. I just wanted to.
Yep.
Be sure I understood what it meant.
So are you asking if we have any questions about the middle column?
Middle column or the far left, the minor policy administrative change column?
The, just to clarify, the Chapter 117 conformance, back in 2004, the state made.
Oh, right.
Had a lot of changes to the land use regulations.
Yes.
And we found that a lot of ours had not been updated to meet that, which is really just a cleanup process, because this, where we didn't update it, the state regs are in effect, but it doesn't make it very user-friendly, so.
Yep.
It's changing statute.
And you know, we actually made a whole bunch of changes too when that happened?
I know.
Really?
Not enough, I guess.
I wasn't here, okay?
No, I wasn't either.
Yeah, we made a slew of changes.
All right.
You know, for that.
For the exact purpose, yeah.
Maybe I did.
Yeah. It's interesting.
Hey, what the heck?
Yeah.
That is interesting. I should research those.
So I guess one thing I'm interested in, in the middle column is, it looks like a bullet after bullet of challenging.
Or, or failed previous attempts.
Or stuff I want to be home when you're trying to do.
Depressing.
Right. Right. Yeah, we had all sorts of different headings for these columns.
Yeah. Powdable, non-powdable.
Things like that, that's right. Right?
We've already tested out some of them.
Right.
We all want to design a minute.
Right.
No.
But we have talked about quite, I mean.
Yes, we have.
All of these things, so it's, it's good. District consolidation. So zoning district consolidation?
Yes.
Yeah. We, I think we referred to that at a previous meeting. There's like four commercial districts on Canal Street that have just very really minor differences between them. That's source of frustration to some staff.
There's some other examples. Along the Whitestone, there's some industrial zoning districts that are single parcel-sized zoning districts.
Yeah.
Which is generally a practice that professionals like to avoid. They're big parcels, but they're single zoning districts, parcels.
They've almost created one of those on Putney Road, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Putney Road.
Yeah.
Commercial districts are probably worth revisiting. I think some of that will come out of the consultants' work.
Right. Right. We've been thinking along those lines also. And then the possibility of a couple of things, I mean, at the very, at the very kind of like 40,000 feet philosophical level, at an earlier point in Brattleboro's history, certainly much earlier on in its zoning history, we took seriously the industrial classification, and we had serious industry that probably never really fell into the category of heavy industry, but we had pretty heavy light industry, if you can understand that distinction. So Georgia Pacific and some of the uses on the railroad tracks on Putney Road to the north also probably felt, fell into that category. And what we're aware of now, given the history of economic and social activity in Brattleboro, is that we don't feel like we have a set of resources or, or, you know, nascent industries of the heavy kind, or even the particularly noxious kind, that are likely to grow here. And contemporary manufacturing on the scale that we're likely to experience in Brattleboro, the single biggest issue probably associated with that is heavy truck access, or heavy truck traffic, has the, has the impact on the neighborhood that you'd want to be most concerned about. So things such as odor, air pollution, noise, the kinds of typical old-fashioned but important considerations that you would have that would underpin defining industrial zoning districts, we don't really think likely to apply in the medium to the long term here. And it could be, you know, in other parts of the country, it's certainly still an issue.
Yeah, but you'd still want to have presidential districts that don't have.
Yes.
Industrial use.
No, I don't want to say that we want to encourage industrial use in residential districts. I just, we've got a pretty significant chunk of land that's zoned industrial. Some of it actually is in the most densely settled parts of the community. So there's industrial zoning districts in the downtown, or on the edge of the downtown, I should say, I guess.
On the Whitestone, there's.
Along the Whitestone.
On the Connecticut.
And on the Connecticut. So, so it's just, that's what I meant, that, that really broad level. So, so it's just, that's what I mean, that, that really broad level, it's like, so how much more are we likely to get large, I mean, even if it was a very large plant, it wouldn't necessarily have to have noxious fumes or smell or pollution associated with it, but if it was just a very, very large establishment, the traffic patterns and the associated impact of that could be a concern, and you wouldn't want to mix it up with the residential neighborhood. But I just wanted to put it out there as a, as an issue about the size of the zoning districts and the purpose of the zoning districts, I guess is what I want to say.
So are these, are these changes to the, these are changes to the zoning rules, correct?
Yes.
So I have a really ignorant question, I think.
That's okay.
If we're talking about the town plan, why are we working on zoning rules right now?
Because we, okay, this is actually a really excellent question, and I should have had that in my introduction. So, I'm really glad that you asked it. That's good, that's very good. Because there has.
You thought I wasn't paying attention, didn't you?
No, I'm really impressed. You get like an A. This is excellent. Okay, so the first thing is, if you're gonna change the land use regulations, zoning and subdivision regulations, then you need to engage in a meaningful discussion with the public. And the town plan is one of the forums, it will process as well as a document, where you, where you undertake that discussion. And the next part is, in the legal structure for doing land use regulation, land use regulations, so that is the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations, have to conform with the town plan. So, if we're gonna change these things over here, we have to start, we have to make sure that this is the town plan and these are the land use regulations, at some point they have to match.
Yes.
And so.
To get sued.
Yes.
At what, at what level of detail do we need to go in, in the plan, to have the discussions?
Not super specific, but we've already talked about this in the office, where depending on how things play out, this may trigger an amendment to the town plan once we've completed the rewrite of the zoning and subdivision regulations, because you want to make sure that the match is pretty good.
If you, I mean, if you had a map in there that showed some area as residential, and when you actually go to do.
And when you say in there, you mean the town plan?
In the town plan.
Yes.
And then you go to write the zoning and you decide that that's going to be industrial, that would not be in conformance, like, you know, getting down to parcel district boundaries, you know, exactly where the district boundary is, probably not so important.
Right.
If you want to do fluvial erosion hazard and there's no supporting language in the town plan, that could be.
A challenge. So, so.
So what is the timing then of when this, we're working on the master plan now and that's going to come out, like this summer?
Fall.
Fall?
By the time, by the time it goes through approval.
The, the town plan should be in effect by fall, okay? And then what we would expect is that one of the primary goals and action steps would be that we would start the work of redrafting the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations almost sort of as an immediate follow-up.
Some of these things in the middle here.
Yep.
So to the extent that you can anticipate what you want to change in the zoning and put in the master plan now, the better.
Exactly. The more, the more the dialogue or the conversation or the general direction that we want to go in is specified in the town plan, the more direction we get, and the more awareness the public has that that's the direction we're going in. So if they don't like this direction, now's the moment to say it, I guess, would be what we're trying to say.
On the other hand.
Yeah.
The town plan has to get finished at some point.
Yeah.
And so I, I think that that's a challenge, is to decide what level, I think, just exactly your question, Jim, is at what level of specificity are we going to go to?
No.
So that when people come to, to a meeting about the town plan, they're not upset that we're changing the zoning while we're doing it, you know? I mean, it would be really easy for the public to think that when we're calling out certain things.
Right.
That that is threatening their use of their land in their zone. I'm, I'm just saying, I think that's really possible, you know? So I, I mean, I think it would be good to be really clear about what this all means, you know?
If Dimmerston is any example.
Well, yeah.
I was trying not to use the D-word, but.
But it's true, you know, and, I mean, I even had people call me about those commercial district meetings, thinking that somehow having that meeting, we were changing the zoning on, on a street.
You know, we would, I want to emphasize now and be at pains to emphasize each and every time, that it's a recording of people's known challenges with the existing regulations that we're interested in, and capturing the vision of how people would like the regulations to be framed, that we're interested in capturing at this moment. So it's really a framework thing that we're interested in, we're not going to talk about the details. And we're certainly not involved in the process of actually drafting, even drafting language, okay? We're not going there at all.
We know that.
Right.
We just have to make sure.
Make sure that everybody else knows that.
And, and, but the other part of this is introducing new concepts.
Yes. Well, I think that's.
Right.
And so, I mean, I think that's really important.
Yes.
For us to do in this process, it's great.
And I think that that's really what we intend here. So, you know, clearly because of the subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations are from the nineteen eighties, but really sort of the nineteen sixties, seventies, that concepts like low-impact development, or even conservation subdivisions are totally, you know, not there, they're just not present. And so if people find those kinds of techniques, you know, valuable to consider, then that's what we want to try and capture now. Not, we're, this, this is how the language is going to read, but this is a concept that we're going to explore for inclusion, possible inclusion, as a technique in the new regulations.
But then the, the zoning would be much more, when you're done with it, the zoning's much more specific, and the master plan has these goals.
Yes, exactly. Right. So we would establish at the level of goals, what the land use regulations should contain. I think that's a reasonable debate and topic for the town plan. And then, yeah, the following two years maybe would be devoted to fleshing out the details.
Sounds great.
Yeah, can't wait.
So, one concept that's not here is, is overlays?
Oh, no, it is there.
It's on this.
It's under a technique.
Oh.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up though, because I want to emphasize that that is, you know, on one level, kind of a policy decision, and on another level, it's definitely a technique, but it, you know, you need to sort of make a, a policy-type decision that you're going to use overlays to resolve certain, you know, to, as a way of dealing with certain issues.
It'd be hard to do district consolidation without allowing for overlays, right? Kind of?
Could be done.
Yeah, it could be done, but, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's a tool to make it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we already, we do have some overlays right now. We have the flood hazard area, the national flood insurance, the area that falls within the National Flood Insurance Program.
Right.
Which is more of a restrictive than the underlying use. And we also have the shoreline overlay, or shoreline overlay, to some parts of the Connecticut and the West River.
Right.
Which again is more restrictive, but you can use an overlay district and have incentives in there. A lot of communities have senior housing, or fifty-five plus, or some age-restricted housing, maybe you get a density bonus. So we could find areas that, where we want to encourage housing development that's close to services, grocery stores, transportation, and, you know, put a whole area, said that would be appropriate for.
Is that the only technique that's incentive, has incentives in, that you're proposing?
The PUD does not have incentives right now.
No. Vermont, you'll get the subtlety here, you'll like this. Vermont, it doesn't use density bonuses very frequently at all as a major tool, which, when you think about things like PUDs, or fifty-five-plus housing, or a whole bunch of other examples, where you see them in the rest of the country, they usually come with pretty significant bonuses, and that's how things really get advanced. In all of our research, I think there's hardly any municipality in Vermont that uses density bonuses associated with those things, and consequently, they're A, not very common, and B, not very well executed when they are, because that's sort of what you're looking for when you try to do it. So, that, that would go back to the conservation subdivision concept as well. So, I would, I would consider, you know, a useful tool there, you know, give a density bonus if you're willing to undertake a conservation subdivision, because of the overall benefits.
Maybe that should be something that is, like, encouraged in the energy plan?
Uh, yeah, actually, there could be, there could be a way in which that coincides with the energy plan, which would be really good. The one note of hesitancy that I have here is that ironically, you might need more heat in the market to make density bonuses function effectively, and while it could evolve, it certainly isn't present now.
Right. Without demand, there won't be any need for density.
Right.
And I actually, I don't think, until the 2004 land use changes, I don't think.
It was even permissible.
Yeah, it wasn't clearly permissible in being Dillon's rule.
In Vermont.
In, because I think that came up with some of the affordable housing changes that happened in statute, and if you're taking the Dillon's rule seriously, you wouldn't have had it in there.
Right.
So the state has lagged behind.
Yeah, it's definitely lagged. And there's some, I think it points to some interesting attitudes that shape the state regulatory framework, and then also, sort of inverted commas, whatever the normal municipal kind of reaction to that is. So, to be clearer about this, take another example, like, we spend a lot of time discussing the benefits of mixed use in conjunction with smart growth strategies. So the prototypical development there would be, say, a new structure in an existing neighborhood, so not greenfield edge type development, but already, an already established and built-up part of town, with, except, highly accessible ground floor or first-floor retail, and then maybe the second floor would be devoted to offices, and then the third floor given over to apartments, so that you, on one, on one parcel, you're having this mix of uses, retail, office, and, and residential.
Like the building we just built?
Yeah, like the one we just had burned down, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, so circa eighteen twenty-six zoning, which we now regard as pretty, pretty, what's the word I'm looking for? That was pretty, that was pretty smart, I guess.
Appreciate.
Yeah, right. Well, actually, it was around the same kind of constraints that we're dealing with now, which was that transportation was expensive and difficult, not just expensive and not just difficult, but both, because it was horse-drawn and, and it was, you know, that was the, that was the constraint. So, and it's again the constraint. So, in an instance like that, to do a good version of that is actually a lot more expensive upfront for the developer than to have the same parcel of land and build, you know, a butler building, you know, a prefab metal building with a, with a brick facade, with a, you know, modular building for offices next to it, and then a modular duplex next to it, or a series of, of single-story apartments or two-story apartments next to that, that are actually done well, and done to reasonably high standards, stacking them, just the act of stacking them and doing what's required to achieve that, is in fact more expensive upfront. So, consequently, we don't get too much of it, because there's enough land to do it the other way, and there are very few constraints preventing a developer from doing it the other way, you know, the suburban or low, low-rise.
Brown.
Just a low-density kind of model. So, to make it worth it developers while offering concessions or density bonuses so that the extra upfront cost is offset by the ability to build more, is one typical way of addressing that. But that assumes things about property markets that I'm not sure are necessarily in play here, right now, over say, a more expensive, faster-growing community.
And then are there disincentives that can be put in place for the typical scenario that you just discussed?
We don't, exactly. So, so we don't have any carrots, and even when we do have carrots, they're the very small ones, the bite-sized jobs.
Baby carrots.
They're little, yeah, what's that?
The baby carrots.
The baby carrots.
Huge sticks, really, you know?
And, well, we, we have twigs, but we just have a lot of them. And so we don't have, we don't have a clear disincentive, you know, you know, so there's no way you could sort of, say in a PowerPoint presentation or in a pamphlet, that you could hand to a potential developer and say, "Look, the front is all the carrots, and the back is all the sticks," and they go like this and go, "Hey, no sticks, no carrots, so I do whatever I want," and that would be one conclusion you could reach.
I, I should say, I mean, I think, I don't know how many of you are familiar with form-based code, but one could see that as a stick.
Yes.
Could be a carrot, too.
It could be a carrot, too, yeah.
I mean, that's the idea, but it is supposed to be a carrot.
Right.
That's right.
But one person's carrot could be another person's broccoli, you know?
That's right. So form-based code, so the type of zoning we have right now regulates based on use, so.
Right.
Separate industrial, separate residential, and, you know, clearly define what uses can be in what districts, and, and then you have your development standards, and you deal with the density, and then, you know, all the other standards. With form-based code, what you're really doing is prioritizing the form of the building over the use, so you're dealing with things like the height, instead of a setback, how far from the street where you need, how, it kind of treats the, the street as more of a public space.
Public space.
Important to the block or whatever. So you say, you know, where's that building need to be in relation to the street, as opposed to a setback, which is saying, you know, you have to be a certain distance back. That can be a little semantics, I think. Where you have use-based zoning classifications under the zoning we have now, with form-based codes, you have a regulating plan, and it's more parcel-based. You can do it in certain sections of towns, like a downtown, or maybe an area that you want to make to be mixed use. And another big part of it is you get into architectural standards, so building materials, windows, I mean, you can, I guess, I haven't seen ones that don't go there.
Don't.
But they might exist. So windows, doors, roofs, walls, kind of some of the concepts that you see in this design guidelines, this is different than form-based code.
And then, uh, right.
Yeah, and form-based codes are pretty graphic.
So it's a, it's a way to get mixed use out of space, rather than?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it takes mixed use very seriously and tries to encourage it wherever it's practical. I'd say that one of the, you know, to get, I think the point that Sue made early on here that really needs to be emphasized is that our zoning regulations are old enough to hark back to the kind of really classic zoning, which is it's about separating uses, because it's understood that in cer- certain kinds of uses are in conflict with each other.
Right.
Whereas the argument that actually underpins form-based zoning is that it doesn't see those conflicts as being real conflicts anymore, or certainly not anything that you couldn't overcome or resolve with, with thoughtful design.
Okay.
So when you're in a residential neighborhood, the kinds of things that you might see, for example, would include, instead of, instead of the idea of a setback, which is, this is the minimum distance you can be in relation to the street or the sidewalk. There's a line, and they call it the build-to line, so every building has to have at least a percentage of its front elevation or its frontage on that line. And then they'll say, they may say things about, again, in a residential context, that either the garages for cars have to be on that line, and with the doors facing the street, which is, which is less common than actually they want the garage doors not facing the street, and it's the sort of, if you like, the face of the house being the contribution to the streetscape, not the storage of cars.
Right.
So, there are those kinds of concepts that underpin it, and then in more of the mixed-use setting, it's careful attention to separating out the functions associated with the use of the building through careful landscaping and design, so things like trash, storage, and, again. So things like trash, storage and, uh, again, car parking and those kinds of functions are dealt with through quite specific design requirements.
Right, okay.
And it's, and with the form based code, you can regulate use. You know, if you've got really something noxious, you can say no to it. You can also say on the first floor in downtown, we want retail and office only. And on the second and third floors, you can have office and residential. I mean, you can, you can do some use regulating generally, um, prefer it not to be so specific. So instead of breaking down all different types of retail, maybe it's just retail. And then if you have, you could put some performance standards on, so like you shouldn't, you know, can only be open from nine AM to seven PM or something, something like that.
Right, okay.
To kind of not really be specific on the uses.
Okay.
And I think over time, what we've done is in an effort to encourage mixed use, but with an old fashioned style zoning ordinance that was really about separating uses out, is that we've over time tended to write really long lists of permitted and conditional uses at the front of each different zoning section. So that if you were to sort of rifle through the zoning ordinance right now, you'd be like, so what is the difference between industrial and commercial or commercial, you know? Because all the, in an effort to encourage more variety, what we've done is actually smudge or, or make less distinct the separations. If we go to something much more like a form based code, it, I think would be important to revisit those lists and first of all shorten them just for the sake of brevity. And then the other one though, is that there may be conflictual uses.
Yeah.
So for instance, um, not all retail spaces are exactly the same. Um, and so you might wanna actually have some control over what kind of retail activities are located in a mixed use building in proximity to, say, an elementary school, right? Which sort of is a very context driven, um, kind of performance, set of performance standards around mixed use. Right now, we control that by just thinking we should probably try not to have too much retail near an elementary school. Right? So there are some subtleties in here that we could actually get caught by. And, and it's probably important to remember that there still are some conflicting uses, but I would say that they might be within categories, all right, rather than between categories. So it's not that industrial is necessarily noxious and we want that far, far away from residential. It's that there are some forms of retail that we think are a bad combination with other forms of retail. Right? Without wanting to go into specifics.
So, um, what, I mean, one of the things about all these, the things in the middle column and on the right hand column is that if these, really, I think almost any of these things are gonna get, um, uh, folded into or defined or, um, used in, in the new zoning, uh, they have to get to be more common knowledge of. You know, we have, we'll have to have everybody on the planning commission be real conversant with these things. Certainly the select board, you know, we, we would never want them to hear these terms uh, for the first time when we're in front of them presenting ordinances and so forth.
Or even the town plan for that.
Or the town plan. I mean, that's why I think it, it's important to have these in the town plan. And, uh, at least in capsule form so that, uh, because, you know, form based code, you know, a hundred and one percent of the people you step on the street aren't gonna know any of what it means.
Right.
I'd, I'd wanna put two kind of caveats, I guess, or warnings out on the form based code. I think that we are a little bit challenged to see how using the form based code in a residential or applying it to single and two family homes, how that works statute wise.
Yeah.
Um, we think that it's kind of problematic because you can't do site plan review on one and two family dwellings. And so if you're then telling somebody that they need to build two stories with, you know.
A gabled roof or a pitch, you know, yeah.
We're concerned about it in that context.
Right.
Um, and I think the second one went out of my head. Oh, it came back. I think that implementing form based code, because it does take the regulating plan, I think that it would take a commitment of funding by the town, town to get design professionals in to help do that. So it's not just a, it's just something to think about.
Right.
That it's probably not something that would be implemented in year one. It might take some time to do something like that.
And this is a little bit more contentious, but to add on to that one, we don't issue building permits per se in the town of Brattleboro. So one of the challenges that we would have is that, you know, from an enforcement or a regulatory standpoint, the ability of a building owner, but the most particular, I'd say so in the residential category, somebody could be most of the way through building a carport or locating a swimming pool or adding an addition, um, in a way that would challenge some, some of these principles. Um, and we would have, A, practically no knowledge of it until it was too late. And then even B, given what Sue just said about one and two family dwellings, very limited ability to enforce against it. So, um, we are about the largest town in Vermont without, um, building inspections and building permits. And, um.
So it's not a state thing, it's, it's our town?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a typical reaction.
Yeah, right. We can talk about this much later.
How come we had to get a building permit for our addition?
You got a zoning permit and you were nice enough to come along and comply. Which is what you're required to do. And, you know, I would say that in most.
Only stands for permit, it doesn't mean building permit.
Yeah, no one came along to make sure that the wires were in the right place or, you know, those kinds of things.
Something like that, I see.
Right, the typical.
Certifications, electrical certifications.
There's no connection. I don't know why you're saying that. Um.
Couldn't imagine.
So, um, yeah, so typically in a, in a different jurisdiction, there's a, you know, there's a building inspector and they inspect the foundation before you move to the next stage. And then they inspect the framing before you put the drywall on. And, you know, there's a sequence and set of schedule fees and a documentation of each stage of the construction process, usually over a fairly small value. I think the ones I can think of are, you know, five thousand dollars or.
Put, you know, we put stoves in, in, in Massachusetts and
Yep.
Uh, the homeowner has to get a building permit and they come and inspect it, you know?
Right, which means.
Two thousand dollars or something.
Right, but that means that you got it in the right spot in.
Yeah.
You're not gonna get us fixed.
Right, yeah.
And the installer has to have a license and all that, you know.
Yeah, exactly. So it, it's consistent with some other interesting things about Vermont, which is the self certification process of, of contractors, right, which you're familiar with as well, so, yeah.
So, uh, with all these, um, these concepts, uh, I mean, I think, I'm not saying that, that we need to say that these are all gonna get implemented or anything like that, but I think whatever way that we can introduce, um, these ideas to people so that it does become more, more sort of general, um, general knowledge. I mean, it's obviously gonna be for nerds only in some cases, but, you know. No offense to any.
Is that what we are then? Person, don't be exclusive.
No, but you know what I mean? I, I, there needs to be, um, some of the terms and some of the ideas need to be in kind of general, um, conversation about things, you know?
Yes.
And if they're not, uh, there's no chance. I mean, I think that was one of the things about fluvial erosion. It's, it was a new concept and, you know, it was really hard for us to get our hands around. It took us a long time to get educated enough to really know even what we were talking about, you know? And that'll be the case with form based code, for sure.
Right.
And I think for overlays, for me, that's, I'm still not quite clear on what an overlay is. I get, I get it from a PUD inspect and stuff, but you know, um, how many people know what a PUD is, you know?
Right.
That kind of stuff, you know?
While we're on about identifying new categories of activity or concepts or whatever, if you look at the bottom of that far right column, I keep on forgetting the really, Liz could probably help me out, the really good professional term for this. But, um, that senior housing community overlay is meant to reference the kind of, um, master planned community that encounters, um, all stages of physical activity from, you know, active seniors through to people needing varying levels of assisted care. Sometimes they're offered within the same, the same neighborhood or the same community. They have a special term for this. And one of the things that we've identified about Brattleboro in other phases of our work on the town plan is, one is that we're getting a lot older, we're aging faster than the census bureau can keep up with, if you. So for every ten year census interval, we're aging on average slightly faster than ten years, if you get my drift. So, um, and, um, which is pretty hard to do actually. And, um, what this means really is that people of, um, you know, college and working age are leaving and not being replaced at the same number, in the, in the same number by older people moving in. But that given the quality of life attributes that Brattleboro has, um, we think it could be a potential destination community for, um, older people. And so we don't necessarily have any kind of specific accommodation for that or encouragement of that in our current land use regulations. And they can be fairly large, you know, in terms of area, they can be pretty large, I guess is what I'm saying. Now, you know, which, you know, is the market here? And do we have anything that would really prevent that development from happening here right now? Uh, kind of good questions, but I'm really trying to draw your attention to what we really mean by that category of use.
So does that make it into a possibility or a requirement?
The overlay?
Yeah.
It's a possibility or a requirement, depending on the overlay.
I think that we could talk about it as a possibility, but I think in the possibility, we'd wanna frame where that, where we'd want that.
Right.
You know, we don't.
By putting it there, that's where it is? I mean, or, or, I mean, so, so if you, with an overlay, it's, it's on a map, right?
I could feel a whiteboard moment coming up.
Eventually it will be on a map, yes.
No, 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 it's all right.
Hold yourself back.
Yeah.
Look at him, he's even trying to get ready to get up.
Nah, nah, it's okay.
I just scared him.
Fasten your seatbelt.
I just scared him.
So, so if there's an overlay of, you know, there's a, a twenty acre area and there's a ten acre overlay, let's say, there. You're defining where, are, are there inducements inside that overlay or some sort of?
Well, it can be either. It can either be stricter regulations or it can be some sort of incentive to kind of guide growth to where you want it. So, um, like a wellhead protection area. So a lot of towns have overlay districts for wellhead protections.
We do.
We've got some around our wellheads too. You don't wanna gas station in your wellhead area because if that tank leaks, it can get into your groundwater and make its way to the well and all that stuff. So that, you know, you might have an area where the base zoning says you can have a gas station, but then you've gone and you've defined this other area and we know that that's a bad use there, so.
The overlay trumps the underlying.
Right, right. And so fluvial origin hazard is another example. Lots of different underlying zoning. We had residential and commercial. We had a lot of different zoning districts along the wetstone. What we were proposing was a, effectively an overlay district that right up against the brook, restrain, you know, constrain what kind of development you could do on each one of those parcels that was affected. But it didn't mean anything for people outside the overlay. You could still be in a residential district on route nine, but just not in the fluvial origin hazard.
And, and even the portion of the land, the plot of land that's outside the overlay.
Yeah, the front of your yard might've been outside the fluvial origin hazard layer, but your backyard was in it, which meant that you weren't gonna build something large right up against the brook. Right? So that's another example of it being restrictive. This kind of concept, both for the PUDs and for this kind of use, the sort of senior housing or senior housing community kind of concept would be a little bit more, um, I wanna sort of say proactive. So there's sorts of things that we might wanna associate with PUD. We think that PUDs are suited, suited to certain neighborhoods and certain districts because of the presence of, um, existing presence of transit, access to schools and, you know, there's a whole bunch of other infrastructure features and other things present that mean that we think that this is a suitable area for a PUD. We wouldn't necessarily feel the same way about a remote area of West Brattleboro, two miles from route nine as a PUD that would be thoroughly isolated and leave people without access to a bus or a school or, or whatever, right? So by predetermining where we think PUDs should go, we're making it clear what kinds of attributes a PUD should respond to or have. And the same could be true of senior housing. So would proximity to retail, you know, proximity to, to transit, proximity to retail opportunities and, you know, other open space activities and so forth.
So, so what sort of incentives, taking that one, for example, the senior housing community overlay, other than the fact that they couldn't be everywhere? So that's an incentive in itself in a sense. Because there's places where it could be and places where it couldn't be.
Right.
And so the places where it could be, that's where it would be, right?
Pretty much.
But what other incentives are, are, for example, could exist?
Expedited permitting.
Yeah, I mean, what, 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 yes, exactly.
I'm not sure that our permitting is that slow, but.
Right, but typically what it would do is make the review criteria really clear and therefore reduce the uncertainty associated with even initiating a project like that. So you, it would be make, what you're really doing is demonstrating or advertising to a potential developer that this is, this is what the community intends to happen in this, in this particular part of the, of the municipality. And so we've pre-configured it for you to some extent, saying, we really think that this area is suitable for a senior sort of housing community type development, in which case we relax things about density. We make it really clear what we think the, um, needs would be for, um, circulation around the site and parking and so forth. I mean, a whole bunch of things that could be sort of effectively pre, you know, not predetermined, but certainly fleshed out so that a developer would have a pretty clear guidance. And the more certainty you give them, the more likely they are to pursue it, right?
So I had heard that, uh, I mean, we, we talked a lot about form based code in sort of the, the last stages of the Putney Road, um, the, the Master Plan Committee. And, um, one of the carrots associated with it was that, um, you know, the form was determined ahead of time. And so permitting even, um, how much, uh, objection? You know, that could happen after the guidelines were, were installed, you might say. Uh, what was not restricted, but you know, it was like, we already had this.
Right.
It was almost as right.
Right.
Yes, exactly. That's a huge benefit, actually. I mean, what, and that goes back to the.
Is that, so is that accurate? I mean, is that?
Exactly.
So you sort of, you've sort of fight it out in a way, um, ahead of time.
Yep.
And get the boundaries and some things determined that then somebody says, I understand that's the place to build this kind of thing, or that's the place to establish this sort of, uh, project or whatever.
Even in the instance of an abutter, it doesn't totally negate the abutter's rights. But if the abutter is aware that through a perfectly legitimate master planning process or town planning process and ordinance writing process, the community has reached the conclusion that this particular neighborhood is well suited to this kind of development. that this particular neighborhood is well suited to this kind of development, and then somebody comes along and says, I'd like to do it here, please. The abutter, on some levels, is, they can't say, I never heard about this before, or, you know, they've been, they've had the opportunity to participate, and they may be, they may feel that they lost. They may feel like their voice wasn't even heard properly. I mean, you know, they may have concerns that, that, that they don't want this kind of development. But if you can point to a meaningful process of engagement and the community reaching that conclusion, you know, in a fair way, and then it becomes, you know, local regulation, then that gives a huge degree of certainty to the developer because it makes it really clear that you're actually attempting to enact the community's wishes for this area of land.
And I think in the case of at least PUDs, which right now are not done as an overlay district in town, and also if we did look at something like a senior housing community or whatever the age, whatever it's called, um, you know, we've talked a lot here that we don't, and when we've heard it from people in the community, we don't wanna be extending infrastructure and we don't, you know, we wanna kind of keep it in the urban area. There's areas that, you know, people have said they want redeveloped. I mean, we, we have some existing infrastructure that could be, where we could have infill development of this kind.
Right.
Whether or not the development actually happens, but we have the area for it, so.
Goes out of the graveyard.
Oh, no. I didn't say that.
Any of them.
No, 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 don't even go there, James, okay?
There's other places that people are dying to develop.
No one you should say it. I just knew it. So, and then-
So we have like one minute left in this discussion before we go on to the town plan status report. Anything else that, at this point in time, you think we should?
Um, I just wanna flag for you. So we've talked about subdivision regulations a little bit. Um, road standards is really, road standards are referred to in the subdivision regulations, and they might even be incorporated, but that really is kind of Select Board, Public Works territory, so.
Where is that? I don't even see that.
Oh, it's under the major policy change-
Oh, wow, I see.
Fourth bullet down.
Under subdivision.
So just put that out there, that it really is a, would, it's an important effort to undertake, I think.
It's one of the anomalies of Vermont.
It's going to take-
Right.
You know, some work with other boards.
Right. So again, the presumption is that the sort of norm, normative community in Vermont is much more like Westminster than Brattleboro. And so, and decisions about roads and there are perpences such as sidewalks are considered. That is the purview of the Select Board sitting as road commissioners, not the planning commission sitting as planning commissioners. So there's this odd disconnect between the kinds of things that, so this goes right back to the form-based code then. If we're beginning, if we're gonna begin to take streets very seriously as quasi-public, quasi-public space or open space, or treat streets as something that the community is gonna be deeply engaged in over and above questions of potholes, snow plowing, granite curbing versus concrete, the frequency of catchment basins, the kinds of typical concerns that dominate those decisions now, then there's a relationship question with the Select Board that's sitting as road commissioners about that, which is a big one.
So, for example, we, we, the planning commission may want, maybe, may have something in mind, and that could, would, would, could automatically just get detailed by, well, the Select Board has the say anyway. I mean, the Select Board has to-
Well, we-
Approve it in any case.
Yes, right.
Um, I'm not sure what.
Well-
Where does complete streets fit in this? Is this again-
That's actually interesting. I'm glad you brought that up. That's a really good point. Because the state, the legislature just passed com- so-called complete streets-
Yeah.
Legislation, which takes seriously, um, and it's modeled on some work done by the AARP, so you can see where this whole senior thing is going. Um, so, um, stop me if I make another un-PC joke about this. Um, so, um, bicycles, animals, human, pedestrians, and vehicles, um, all on the same street at the same time, and requiring municipalities to address the mixed-use nature of roads and their road networks seriously. And I think we're, we haven't even seen a draft, we haven't even seen this version of the legislation yet. Um, it's a federal program. Uh, I think to some extent, the Federal Department of Transport's been promoting this, but there's been a very strong lobbying, um, effort on the part of the AARP in particular, at the federal level, to push this. And I guess it's in response to some public health issues that the whole kind of car-based culture is really fundamentally unhealthy. And the only way to address that is to make non-car use of streets safer and more reasonable and more, um, the norm. We don't know how it's gonna touch down when it gets to standards in, uh, in municipalities, but we expect that to be rolling over the next year or so. Um, we don't think it's gonna change the relationship per se between Select Board sitting as road commissioners and planning commissioners sitting as planning commissioners. The reason why I point this out and why it's somewhat anomalous here is that, um, where you find, when you, where you find the definition of road standards in the current subdivision regulations, there's a document for that which basically is the state criteria for road design and construction. How steep it can be, how wide it can be, what kind of gutters it should have. All the design, all the engineering elements of a road are established in various manuals and guidance that is really produced by the state. The town adopts those by reference and then implements them. But it's not us that does the implementation as professionals, and it's not you that does it as a, as a volunteer board. It's, it's the Select Board and the Department of Public Works.
I haven't confirmed this through my own research yet, but I've been told that our road standards are actually, um, maybe have it, are out of date-
Out of date.
With the state's regulations.
Yes.
So perhaps there's room for improvement there.
Right.
And so does the Select Board, or does somebody see the Select Board's job as road commissioners to stay up to date with what the state's standards are and put them into the regs?
Uh, I don't know.
Not really.
No, I don't know what the answer to that question is.
I mean, it, in a way, it would be that, but, um, probably if-
Right.
If they're in the subdivision regs, then that probably isn't the case.
Well, I mean, they're sort of, they're referenced in the subdivision regulations and they exist on, you know, what I'd say, to be fair to everybody, we've done very little new roadmaking around here for a really long time. Um-
But where this is gonna come into play, I, I mean, the, the most obvious one to me is in places where there might be backroads, backstreets created.
Yes.
Uh, if, you know, there might be a, a mound of acreage where if you put a, a, a backroad through there, and you have to, um, comply with, you know-
Right.
Rights of way and stuff like that, uh, you might be wiping out more land than you're, um, making useful.
Yep.
Right. So one, one of the real basic concerns we have is lane width already now might be a little bit too generous, depending on the size of the street. So there might be some, there are definitely some older, small streets in and around the downtown here that are pretty narrow, and people find them attractive and don't find them a huge constraint in terms of mobility. There's some emergency vehicle access questions that are real, but you set those aside, and there, people find them attractive partly because it diminishes the speed at which the car can travel, and so therefore it is instantly more attractive as a mix, as a sort of a complete street kind of environment. If you were to try and build a new street like that, you might confront real challenges because the minimum standards require a much bigger street built in a much more kind of traditional way. Um, and things such as the requirement of shade trees or, um, a whole bunch of other things such as sidewalks or the area given over to bicycle pedestrian use as part of the traveled lane and all those kinds of questions, really, I don't think are addressed in our current standards.
So in a case like that, then, um, there could be planning objectives that would-
Yes.
But heads with the state road regs.
Yeah. Although with the adoption of complete streets, I actually, now I'm beginning to, uh, we need to look at what the legislation says, but I suspect that in fact what will happen now is the implementation of complete streets will actually constitute a bit of a challenge to our existing road standards and even maintenance procedures that go with them. Um-
Is it part of the complete streets to encourage more neighborhoody kinds of things?
Yeah.
Like those, like cohousing might have a limited number of internal roadways for vehicles that are, that they're not big streets yet.
Sure, sure. Right.
I mean, not that we have cohousing here, but-
Right.
Could, could.
Yep. Okay. So just, that's a good, I'm glad that Sue liked it because the road standards thing will come up, and it's, I think, following on the heels of complete streets, it's gonna be interesting.
It also falls back to when we talk about citizens wanting more better sidewalks in certain areas, and then how to, where does that fit in, that, that perceived need by the community as opposed to road commissioners and the departments and all that?
Right.
And how do we-
Right.
Meld that together?
Yeah, I mean, it'll come out in ways such as the provision of on-street parking and how to do that, how to meet the, how to meet the safety issues associated with on-street parking and snow clearing and those kinds of things, but how also to permit on-street parking as a way of traffic coming, for instance. So there's two, there's opposing, there's opposing viewpoints there. Many people regard on-street parking as a way in which you, um, you know, you know, can achieve traffic coming because you just narrow down the traveled way, and the perception of the driver is that there's hazard everywhere because of all the parked cars versus wanting to be able to turn into a side street at four o'clock in the morning in a snowplow and not expect to bump into any parked cars, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, looking at bicycles as commuters.
Rather, yes, yeah.
Yes, as the cars, as we encourage that and what that means.
Right. Okay.
So it's almost twenty-five oh?
Yep.
Does it say twenty-five or thirty-five minutes here on?
It could probably be done soon.
It says thirty-five, but I think we could shrink it.
Good. I know if I put my glasses on, I love it though. So, let's call it twenty-five minutes, Sue, if you, if you can do that and-
Sure.
You're doing it?
So that item is town plan status report, and thank you so much for all the zoning talk. It's very good. More to come, you know, but-
Yeah, plenty.
The kind of stuff you'll see talked about in the chapter unless there's strong resistance, so, so let me know. Um, so what, what we did here in this table is to kind of, uh, give you an idea of where we're at, what we've been doing, what we expect still to happen. Um, we broke it down by chapter, um, because Rod and I have had a couple meetings with, with people or interviews with people. Um, so we've got the, uh, fourth and fifth comments, or under the comment, there's received and seeking. So received is groups that we've talked to. Not all of them have actually seen a draft of the chapter, um, but some of them have and have given comments. And then seeking is people that we're still, either will be discussing it, or we intend to send a draft along to, or intend to still, um, reach out and contact. Um, and then outreach is more of the kind of larger-scale meetings, um, that we've had or expect to have. And-
What's T-Peg?
Town Plan Advisory Group, which was, which still exists. It was put together early on to give advice, yeah, on this.
Some of the people who've come to our meetings have been part of the T-Peg and Kate Baccers.
Yep.
And Maggie Barton-Hagan.
We call them teabaggers, assisting from the tea party.
Please stop. So, um, so we continue to work on drafts. Just because you don't see a draft actually existing doesn't mean there isn't one in production. It's just not quite, um, there yet.
Housing, and housing would certainly fit into that category.
Yes. And you've seen some work on transportation, um, which will be back soon. Um, same with arts, and, well, they both mentioned in progress, but, um, so we're, we're working away on it for sure.
And all of these chapters have to have maps and all, all kinds of-
Not all of them.
No.
And there's about four, five required maps, um, that we're working with London Regional Commission on. Yeah, and a lot of it's just kind of the inventory stuff. What do we have and where is it? Or what are we planning on doing? Sure, are there any questions or
No, do we have, um, we had this other schedule of what we were looking at. Do we, in, in relationship to this, do we have a, a new kind of direction, where the next two meetings are gonna go?
No, we don't, we haven't talked about that. I mean, it just, because there's so, it's, how do I?
There's just so many moving parts, almost, within each one of these lines that it would take us a little while to sort of go back to that. I mean, I, we have been, we have, we've, we've talked about this a lot. I think, yeah, we're-
It seems like our big, um, our big things that we have yet to do are, you know, the, the big housing meeting.
Housing.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, if we're gonna have, uh, we talked at one time about having a big economic development meeting.
Mm-hmm. That's right, we did.
Yeah, I think, um-
I guess the commercial district meetings have been that to some extent.
To some extent, we're, we're definitely including those, this part, because they've been straddling.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I haven't, we didn't talk about that, um, didn't, didn't plan for a big meeting in this because I think, see how that goes.
Is there gonna be another, I mean, in the initial schedule that you gave us, um, we're a little off there, but there was gonna be one more, a third public forum there.
Oh, this is the one from Roger that you're looking at?
Yes, yes, there will be.
There's still me, okay.
Yes. And so there's some additional meetings that have been scheduled as part of that project. Um, and I think that over time, what we've begun to, uh, to realize about economic development is that, um, it's certainly a serious and important topic for the community, and we've received lots of, um, reaction to it. I think what we're challenged by is, um, feeling like, um, more and more, we need to be very clear about the kinds of forces that are operating beyond the direct control of the, of the community, number one. And then number two, really focus in a meaningful way on the things that we can do at the level of the community that really are economic development activities. And there, you know, going back to the consultants project, I think that's part of what we're, you know, that's a large part of what we think we can achieve locally, which is to address the vitality of, of the commercial districts, including downtown. Um, and then, um, I mean, you know, one, one version of something like looking at the impact of the fire is to realize that pretty quickly your economic development strategy for the next five years can be incredibly focused, um, and not small, actually, really, really big in terms of how complicated that's gonna be. But if there was a good outcome to that, um, within five years, then I would regard that as a pretty significant success for a town of this size.
That could also implicate whether it'll happen or not. I mean, there's talk of having the district heating unit, and again, with, with this big of a building, um, that has electric, electric heat, that's a big, could be a big factor in-
It's a huge opportunity as well as a huge challenge.
That's right, that's right.
Right. The good news is, in the, the background to the economic development thing, and I don't, I don't wanna take it away from the discussion of the, of the, um, status report, but we have been able to establish that the boundaries for the new census tract, um, which, you know, is the same boundary as the New Market Tax Credit Zone incorporates downtown, that, that part of downtown where Brook's House is located. So in other words, it's not an effect right now, but by March two thousand and twelve, Brook's House will be in the New Market Tax Credit Zone. As, and the line actually- Credit Zone, as, and the line actually comes all the way down Western Avenue and High Street, makes a turn through the High Grove Lot, so actually, older cars on the, no, it's okay, and so, and then turns downhill on Grove Street and goes past the post office and then down Harris Place and into the river, just north of Elie Cheese Restaurant.
So how does that get deter, how did that get determined?
Yeah, really.
That's a downtown census block, and we were able to review the census blocks as components and census tracts at the point where they were starting the overall mapping exercise associated with the two thousand and ten census, and we reassigned that census block from the census tract that goes up Wantistiquet and to Puck Road and Plonk it in the same census tract that takes in Flat Street, so we just reassigned a census block and that census block was most of downtown, and.
And that was strategically done to do this?
Yes. Yes, on the basis of demographic data that we reviewed, we're able to make an argument that that was a more appropriate assignment of that census block.
Well, good for you.
You like that?
I do.
Yeah, that's pretty good, wasn't it?
And that's different than the downtown district, then?
Uh, yeah, but you'll notice in the, in the outline, I guess it was still an outline, wasn't it, of the economic development chapter last time we met, I had as one of the goals, develop a sort of like a neighborhood level plan for the New Market Tax Credit Zone, which is effectively saying downtown, all the way down to the border with Guilford, out along Route nine, for some distance, at some point it ends, I can't remember that, western boundary. So, so for instance, that would be a really big reorientation of our focus if we made that district.
Doesn't have anything to talk about.
The subject of our attention for economic development, that gets back to the zoning questions of, you know, frost and flat, further south, all the way out on, you know, through the existing area, where we know it is now, we're, and, and we've got some local expertise.
Two meetings ago.
And with, with some local attorneys who got a lot of knowledge from doing the Commonwealth Area Project with New Market Tax Credits, and then Housing Vermont has now actually moved into the New Market Tax Credit business, and so, there's been quite a bit of growth there.
I think.
Question from the public.
Okay, I'll just step right up to the microphone, please, and say who you are.
I'm Kate Anderson, I'm from Brattleboro, when would that designation take effect?
Currently, we expect it to be in place by March two thousand and twelve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's it called again?
The, the New Market Tax Credit, N-M-T-C Zone.
New market is two separate words.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's new.
Like the town of New Market.
No, right, right, no, it's new market, as in, not an old market.
New market tax.
Tax credit zone, and it's, it's built on census tracts that have a certain demographic profile, basically, that eighty, that the median income is eighty percent, in rural areas, the median income of that census tract is eighty percent of the communities, eighty percent or lower of the community's median income, so a twenty percent or greater variation.
And is it always a percentage of a given town, I mean, is it a quarter of the town or something, or?
Oh, no, I mean, you know, if we're in Chicago somewhere, there'd be New Market Tax Credit Zones all over the place.
Some towns might not have it at all.
And most of them don't, doesn't have it at all, there's only three or four in Vermont. There's one here, there's one in Burlington, there's one in Rutland, and there's one in Nissan-Chansbury.
And this one is based on the two, two thousand and ten census?
No, the existing district is not the same, so the existing district is effectively a little bit smaller than the new one that goes into effect in March two thousand and twelve, so, right now, Brooks House is not in the district, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right, come March.
Even though it's downtown.
Right, that's gotten, yeah, the downtownness of it is not the issue here.
Yeah, okay.
We've just, we reass, what we call, the term is, we reassigned a census block from one census tract running north of town to one running south and west of town.
You have a little map of that for us, us visual types, you know, like, like this break.
Um, yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, we've got a map. Right.
Yeah, some of us are, need that, you know.
This is on it, she's got it. All right.
Kate and I know the census district.
Oh, that's right, you're a survivor of that as well?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so they'll walk it with you if you want.
Yeah, this, I'm back. This seems huge.
Uh, yeah.
And how do you get this kind of, I mean, who's, who's eligible to use the tax, New Market Tax Credit, what kind of business?
Oh, it can either be housing or retail or, or industry, there are, usually, you know, it's a market, it is what it sounds like, it's a real market-driven program, so private investors actually put their money in, and so they need to be able to see that there's gonna be a return on their investment, the reason why they're willing to do it is that it gives them a thirty percent break on their taxable earnings, which is significant.
So, it's sounding even more attractive than?
Yes, it's very attractive.
Yeah, so, is there some sort of, of an advertising plan or a public, public relations plan on this?
Well, I mean, the first thing that we need to do, and we need to respect, I mean, if we're talking about Brooks House, then it's currently owned privately and the owner needs to make those decisions that would result in, you know, this being available as a site for investment, but what I'd say about the New Market Tax Credit Zone more broadly, the whole area, is that there's ways in which we can attract outside funding to transform large parts of the neighborhood with large-scale economic, you know, large, large-scale construction.
Yeah.
If the market, if the market supports that, so, you know, the yogurt factory is a perfect example, they, they use New Market Tax Credits as a substantial component of their investment, and that, that really enabled them to do what they're, they're doing, and that's precisely why they located where they're located, so they could take advantage of that.
And where are they located?
Just off of Route five in the Delta Campus, it's just south of town on the road to Guilford, and so.
Right on Guilford, right on the way.
Right, yeah, in fact, you have to go into Guilford to get there, you can't get there from Brattleboro on a road, across.
You could hike through the woods, through the.
Yeah, you could go through the Austine School and go over the top, but, yeah, all right, so.
So, the schedule, or, or I mean, at least where we are.
Yep.
And that's great, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
I thought that was actually pretty useful to do.
Yeah, it is. Anybody have any, any other questions or concerns or comments or?
If we have comments on any of these various sections, we're free to make them.
Sure, yeah, I would encourage, yeah, I would encourage people who are making notes and margins or whatever it is, to feed them to us as frequently as you can manage on any form that's suitable, yeah.
And I expect that we will get together pretty soon and we'll work on a schedule and see.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's it. So I mean that with comments, even if what you're doing is writing in the margins and you don't know how to get it to us and you don't wanna transcribe all the margins into an email, you bring it in, we'll scan it, we'll give it back to you, and then we've got the scan, as long as we can read your writing, well, it's an issue, kinda.
Because it's true that that is gonna be, you know, from here forward, besides our meetings, that's gonna be our big method of.
Communicate.
Participation.
And, and the emails out to the general public that I have requested, that's still happening for each meeting, so that that's going out with attachments of stuff, so people have the option to still comment if they choose.
Yep.
And would they get, like, stuff like this that was passed out to us here rather than in the packet?
No, we can put it online.
We can put it online, we can make sure there's a link to it or something on the website.
Yeah, that'd be great, especially this would be great for people who want, or at least go out to T-Peg, so they can be kept abreast of where we're going now.
I have a question about this, this was made by the, by the, building a better Brattleboro?
Yep.
Why, like?
They got grant funded?
Yeah.
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 What's the relationship between building a better Brattleboro and letting go?
So, are you?
Go ahead.
Are you familiar with the Main Street Program?
Yes.
Well, Vermont doesn't, has a different program that's based on the National Main Street Program, it's called the Designated Downtown and Designated Village Program, and in order to be a designated downtown, which is kind of like the Main Street Program, you need to have a, I don't know what the word they use.
Did?
No, it, it has nothing to do with that.
No.
You have to have a organization, I guess, that, that.
A betterment, sort of a.
Yeah, a betterment organization.
A betterment organization, a little bit like Monopoly.
So that is how building a better, better Brattleboro.
It's a betterment organization.
So they had access to funds and this was a good purpose to use those funds?
Believe it.
Yes.
And I think it's a really good document and we didn't talk about it under zoning, but this kind of sits on a shelf and there's no link to the zoning and it was well done, so that's.
Right.
I brought it as an example of design guidelines.
So one of your purposes will be to link it?
Yes.
Yeah, and.
And consider it for other areas, not, not this particular one.
But, but that, this approach, so, one thing that I would be interested in learning more about is, because they're just guidelines, they're, and not everybody knows of their existence or feels obligated to find them out, we don't have a mechanism when we review a project in the downtown that says, why didn't you use the guidelines, and so, the applicant's not required to demonstrate, A, that they did use the guidelines, or B, that they, that they very specifically concluded that they were not gonna use the guidelines and then spell out why, I mean, so, it seems to me it's plausible that you could say, I decided not to use the guidelines and I feel like I still wanna be heard because I'm trying to achieve these other things that are socially valuable, that are not contained in your guidelines, like, I wanna put solar panels on the roof or something else, right?
Other goals, like, rest in the master plan.
Other goal, right, exactly, and so, but we never actually even get to ask why an applicant didn't use the guidelines or didn't reference the guidelines, it's not even a, it's not even a topic of review, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if these were used when Cultural Entry went in, that's in this area, and I don't think they were looked at.
When what went in?
Cultural Entry, on Frost Street.
Oh, right.
So he gets that, I was gonna use Corten, which is really cool, so I don't have to do it.
Well, I'm not saying there's a problem, but I'm just saying I don't think these were even referred to.
Right.
Russ never sleeps.
That's right, so it was a new young kind of commitment there, so, so, you know, one way of framing this is to have a requirement in the zoning ordinance that says that applicant needs to show why they did, they, they elected not to use the guidelines or account for that, which we don't, I mean, that would be a fairly simple tool.
But this would be huge in terms of the Brooks House at this point, that's a big major building.
Yeah.
In our downtown.
That luckily is rated historically, so there are other layers of protection there.
And incentives, and?
Yep, yes, actually.
You could have some sort of incentive for using this or stink if not?
Yeah, I, this, did this come, this coincided with a program of.
The facade improvement.
Facade improvements, yeah, they got money to do that.
And it was established, I think, so that the facade improvement program could work, so, building owners could apply to a state fund that would subsidize the restoration of the facades consistent with the guidelines, and so many of the facades that you see downtown actually benefited from that program.
Shin Law was one of them, their front of their, part of their building was crumbling and they got to redo, new brickwork, made a little difference in the appearance of that building.
If that's what you generally think of the Main Street Program.
Yeah, exactly.
They've done sprinklers and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's those kind of.
Elevators maybe?
For the downtown.
Yeah, although I don't.
Tax credits.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, all right.
So do, so do building owners in downtown get copies of this through BAV, I mean, people who are already there?
I think they may have at the time, I don't.
Some of those have changed, hands obviously, like, like the Italian-American building is.
Right.
Yeah, don't know.
Since this, numbers have changed.
I wanna just go back to the schedule real quick, 'cause I know it's two minutes to, we would like to get the planning commission to meet with the select board to.
Yes.
Give an update on the town plan, it's not happened in my time here, and since we're kind of plowing ahead, we were thinking probably, seeing about getting on their second meeting in May, so we could talk about it at the next meeting, but it's time for an update and.
So that, to be clear, is the, when do we meet, the first and third?
Seventeenth.
Sixteenth, oh, sorry, seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
Yes, that would be the select board meeting, and we would discuss what we would say at that select board meeting on May the? Tenth.
Ninth, sorry.
Sorry, May, yeah, that's right, May the ninth.
Would that be in the form of like a presentation or?
Yep.
More of a conversation?
Well, we would hope that a conversation might ensue, but we'd start off with a presentation.
We'd give them background.
We could just go straight, cut to the chase and have an argument.
Yeah, yeah, well, I wasn't gonna suggest that.
You weren't gonna suggest that, oh, okay.
So it seems like.
We have a different select board than when the Fubel erosion was rejected.
We'll have to see what their schedule is like, but that's what we were thinking, asking.
Yeah. Yeah, and it may not work for them, we don't know exactly what their is.
But it's, it's coming up, or like, we wanna do that.
We would like it to be soon, if, so if it's not that second meeting in May, well.
Probably June.
Yeah, right.
And, and the point of that really is to let them know what, you know, basically give them the status report.
Yes.
On the plan, to look ahead with them about scheduling, and to just basically give them an update, because we don't wanna have the first time that we talk to them about the town plan this time around to be, here it is, what do you think, and, and we have to figure out, figure that out too, you know, how many meetings, how many hearings, how many, you know, what chunks are we gonna bite that off in and all that stuff, because it could be a long and winding road.
And would this meeting include giving them draft handouts or anything to look at or some kind of package of?
We, we would give them materials beforehand for their packets, so hopefully, you know, they have the background on, because, because they're after renewal.
Because, I mean, we're still on drafts and, I mean, yeah.
It wouldn't be drafts of chapters?
No.
Or outlines, maybe?
No.
No.
What are the points of things you wanna accomplish?
It may be, you know, I was thinking about that as you were talking, or just before, and I was thinking even, so, the things that I think are interesting and important to emphasize is that there's a template, so there's a structure for each chapter, that it's gonna take a certain format, what the public participation process has been to date, what we expect it to be by the time it's concluded, and then I think, maybe a sample of some of the goals and objectives and action steps, so that they get a sense of things as basic as the vision statement speaks for twenty years, the, you know, how to get from twenty years to five years, how that's actually done through the document and.
Things like the principles.
Yeah, and then some examples rather than, because I don't think, I don't think they're likely to wanna read or have the time to read every draft of each of the chapters.
No, but if part of what we wanna do is start bringing them into the process, they need to have.
Yes.
I mean, in my mind, it's like, when do we start?
Feeding it to them.
Feeding them bits, so, and it might not be the whole thing, obviously, but some key chapters that they get to look at, some possibilities, so that we can get some feedback from them, because we wouldn't wanna be, I mean, that would be, I think, useful, so that we're not butting up against something that.
Right.
Unexpected at the last minute.
Sure.
You know, we don't wanna be one of those D-towns.
Can I just say that, that vision thing just throws me off and?
It's good, we should talk about it at the next meeting.
You don't like it, yeah, the twenty, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, we should talk about that and we should talk about what you can do, we should really talk about those two things.
Yeah, the what you can do section.
We keep expressing our frustration, but not.
How about trends to? How about trends too?
Yeah.
Trends, yeah.
So let's have, let's have the template or the format for each chapter as a topic of conversation. I think, I think we're there. I think we've actually experienced, we've seen enough different chapters to begin to sort of have strong or not so strong feelings about it and this is the moment to modify it, 'cause it's, you know, we've.
We stumble, I mean, I can sit there for a couple hours trying to struggle at where my attention could be elsewhere, so.
Well, that would be good, 'cause it's true, we have gone through this enough that.
We, it's a good time to reflect on it.
Yeah, and maybe be sure that T-Peg gets an announcement of that and those handouts so that they wanna come to that meeting and have input, because they did a lot of this research for us and I think.
Yep.
I wanna acknowledge them for that work and have them be a part of this process.
Great. Okay.
Yeah. You ready to move to adjourn, sir?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll favorably say hi.
Hi.
You seconded and you want these back?
It's not.